Hey, everyone. This is the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. It's Tuesday, March 9, 2021. We're doing it via Zoom teleconferencing because of the Governor's Executive Order, Number 12, Section 3. So I'm going to call the roll. Mrs. Johnson is present. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
And we have a quorum. Okay, the first order tonight is the Eagle Scout Project Service Project. Mr. Donovan, do you want to start with this?
Sure. So I'll introduce Andrew, sorry, Matthew Zorbe is here to speak about his Eagle Service Project. And so, Matthew, why don't you introduce yourself and talk to the committee about what your project is and what your plans are?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matthew Zorbe. I'm a high school student in Nashua. I'm also a member of 272 located at St. Joseph the Workman Church. Thank you all for taking the time to listen to my proposal tonight. I'm going to propose a service project for Broad Street Elementary School to build a health and safety kiosk. So this would be a little stand that will be placed at the entrance, the main entrance of Broad Street School. It will hold tissues, hand sanitizer, and masks for students and faculty who are entering or exiting the building. The goal of this is to hopefully allow the transition between fully remote school and hybrid and eventually in-person schooling, make it a safer transition for the students and allow them to learn in a better environment. So in addition to the supplies that are being provided, I'll also have a cork board space for messages, health and safety messages, and other information for the students. I will also be collecting an additional supply of tissues, hand sanitizer, and face masks that will allow the kiosk to run autonomously for the next couple months without presenting a financial burden to the Broad Street School, hopefully at least until the beginning of next school year. And at that point, I made an agreement with the Broad Street School that they will decide how to manage the box or the kiosk from that point onward. And they can decide whether they would like to continue supplying it if there's a need for that, or because it's easily portable, they can relocate it or stop using it if they would like. And the overall goal of my project is, again, to reduce transmission. I believe this would have applicability during the COVID pandemic, during flu seasons, even reducing transmission of common colds when a student might feel like they're sick and they forget their mask at home or they need hand sanitizer. My kiosk will be there to allow them to participate in the school day in a safe manner. So at this point, if there are any questions or comments, I'd be happy to explain more.
Thank you very much, Matthew. This is an excellent idea. It's really wonderful to hear a young man like you stepping up and wanting to help the school and make sure everybody's safe and staying healthy. Is there anybody on the committee that has any questions or comments?
Yeah. Thank you. Matthew, I think it's a great, a great project, especially with all that's going on. I had one question. I know you're, you referred to GoFundMe to raise money. And my understanding that GoFundMe takes a certain percentage of the funds that you raise, is there another way you could raise funds without having to pay somebody a percentage of the money you raise? Are there any other?
That's a good question. I think, especially because we're remote and I can't hold an in-person food drive or, or like car wash or something like that, the, it's difficult to actually transfer the money. And I, I haven't looked into any other options yet. I think GoFundMe takes like 3%. But yeah, I don't, I don't know of any ones at the moment.
Okay.
That are to feed.
Okay. I think it's a very worthwhile project and I give you a lot of credit. I think you put, put a lot of thought into this. So, you know, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. This seems like a fantastic project. I just have two questions and I guess, and I kind of understand your thinking about going with GoFundMe. It would be pretty difficult to go door-to-door asking for contributions and that kind of thing in today's environment. So I'm looking at your proposal. You're building this kiosk yourself or is it something prefabricated?
This is a kiosk that I'll build with the help of my troop, the other scouts in my troop, and potentially some friends. So it's, we're going to purchase the supplies from Home Depot and then assemble it ourselves.
Excellent. And have you already checked in with the administration at Broad Street School?
Yes. So I, I reached out to the principal and assistant principal, and I've been working with Assistant Principal Barney to have Broad Street prefers. And so, yeah, I have, I think they're, they're both aware of this. And I'm planning to donate the extra funds to the PTO at Broad Street.
Nice. Thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions? Mr. Donovan?
Yes. How, Matthew, how heavy is this?
That's a good question. It will be pretty heavy. It's going to be made out of pieces of wood, like two-by-ones. So it could get a little heavy, but I've, I've made it so that there will be a wide base, so it won't fall over if it's nudged. I guess for transportation, you probably would need a couple people carrying it, though.
Okay. And you were talking about the GoFundMe. I don't know if this would work because you're not necessarily a teacher, but we use Donors Choose, just another website to look at, just as an option. Take, take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, good evening. So Matt, I'm Sean Smith. I'm the Plan Operations Director. I did review your proposal. Looks, looks great. Just some ideas. So for fundraising, for the lumber and nails or screws or whatever, you know, approach Home Depot, Lowe's, Bellotates. They often contribute things that won't cost you anything for building something like this. They've been very good to the school district over the years. If part of your cost, I don't have your proposal in front of me, if part of your cost is for the masks and sanitation, fluids, things like that, you might also try the United Way of Nashua, because they've contributed a fair amount to the school district already. And you just might talk to them and I can give you, or Mr. Donovan can give you the contact, the person in charge of that if you, if you want that.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Matthew, do you know of any other Eagle Scouts that are looking to do this for other schools in the district?
I do not, no.
Okay, so this is almost like an experimental project to see if it works?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Okay. I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
So, okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to accept the Eagle Scout Service Project.
I second it.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
And good luck to you, Matthew.
Thank you.
And let us know when it's finished so we can get down and check it out.
I'll be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next, isn't it? And it's so nice to see a young man like this wanting to do something for the community and help with the schools to keep infection out, whether it's COVID, a cold, flu, anything. So I commend you. The second item on the agenda is Nashua North Titan Garden.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, good. I was just going to introduce. This is Andrew Moran. Andrew and his group have been involved at the high school level for a few years now. And if you've been to the back of the North High School, you'll notice some gardens there. And so this is a proposal to increase that. So I will now leave it up to the expert, Andrew himself.
So by way of a brief background, over the past, I believe it's the fourth year now, as Regenerative Roots Executive Director, nonprofit, which I run, we've been developing a garden program in collaboration with Steve Fitzgerald over at Nashua High North. As part of the program, we've developed a raised bed garden in the rear of the school. Students use the garden, and we're also hoping that community gardeners can be there. Fed pretty good, success over the last couple of years. We grow a couple hundred pounds every year. That is donated to the local food pantries, and it's part of our summer internship program that we also are developing with the school. So this year, we have already received approximately $4,000 in funding from the USDA. So we're hopeful to make a new fence for the garden. Irie, I gave you a quote from Gate City Fence. It's approximately $4,000 to make the fence, which is what we have received from the USDA. Also, the two girls that are heading this project, they are the ones that actually did the, all the drawings and whatnot. They weren't able to be here today, but both of them were interns from last year. We're thinking about adding three new raised beds for a pollinator garden. Now, originally, we were thinking about potentially adding a small orchard. I feel as though for this year, I think that would be too much. As long as the garden goes good this year, that could be a potential for 2021. But we're currently asking for permission to have Gate City build that fence and then to add a couple more raised beds. And then also, the Art Society was going to do a couple signs and whatnot about importance of healthy eating, things of that nature. But I didn't even know if that would be in your purview. So the major, I guess, limitation or issue or whatnot, and Sean may be able to speak a little bit more about this, was an existing irrigation line. We didn't want to damage such with any of our improvements. And that was another reason that I thought holding off on the small orchard that we ultimately envisioned, and that is in some of your photos. So those eight trees that are in front of the garden, we're thinking about doing those in 2022. But the garden itself would be the fence, the 18 raised beds. The shed has already been built by volunteers from the Club National last year. And it would just be utilized by the Green Club and other students.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one. I know last year they got a lot of the seedlings donated. Has anybody stepped up to continue that? Or do you have the money to get the, I guess you call them seedlings or the seeds?
Yeah, we already, we already have funding for all of the seeds for the garden. We were hopeful, and it'll depend on the public health concerns, whether or not we can grow them at the greenhouse on site. So we were hopeful that we could grow the seedlings on site. We may not be able to just because of the hybrid learning, but we are going to be able to purchase them from any of the other local places. So anything that's going directly in the ground, we'll be purchasing the seeds ourselves. Anything that needs seedlings, it'll depend whether we have access to the greenhouse or we'll purchase it from another local farmer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe somebody will donate.
Yeah, the UNHES Cooperative Extension typically donates, you know, as well. It's just to start any tomato seedlings. Those would be the ones I could see that we'd have to purchase from a local farm. But who knows, maybe we would.
Good luck.
Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
No, it's more of a comment and an endorsement. So Andrew and I have worked together for a number of years, so I'm well familiar with his program. And it's gone very smoothly. And as he mentioned, the main concern I have is irrigation lines. The grassy area back there is irrigated, but as long as we're there, when Gate City Fence comes out there to sink their fence posts, so we can point out where the lines are, and it should go very smooth. And I hope Andrew has an early spring.
Could be. Look at the weather today. So basically, you're just asking permission just to do, put the fencing up and?
Fencing and three more raised beds. That's all. And we've already received the, you know, the funding for such. And they're, the only volunteers would be, again, depending on public health, we'd like to have the kids do the laying of the weed tarps and the, you know, transplanting the plants and whatnot in the spring. But, you know, I guess that'll depend as well.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Brown?
My question was kind of related to that. In the past, for these similar projects, have you had any difficult time getting students and other volunteers to come through the summer consistently to make sure everything's watered and pruned and picked?
So for the, the past three years, I would, I would label two of them as great and one of them as below average. So we try to get a core group every single year. I've been pretty good at getting them to do so. And one component that we're going to add this year is we're going to have some community gardeners. So I am still working with Nate, but having them sign a waiver, so there would be people in the community that would have their raised beds, and then the Green Club would also have theirs. So I think it would add two or three people that were responsible for it to add the sustainability. Overall, it has gone pretty well, but there was one year where we just didn't have the kids show up as much.
And with the community gardeners, if they come in, if something needed to be watered that day, would they walk over and help out the other beds?
Yeah, it's actually a really easy drip irrigation system. So we typically just set up something where you just have to turn on the faucet. It waters the entire garden at once, takes about an hour, and you probably do that two to three times a week. So with, when you actually have weed tarps and an irrigation system like that, it's not as onerous to take care of a garden that size as it would be if you didn't have, I guess, a couple of those things that help with efficiencies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or discussion? If not, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Nashua North Titan Garden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Moran. That was easy. That's easy, you know?
Well, good luck. Good luck. I hope we have good growing season.
Yeah, and, you know, we're optimistic. We, I know that you have a lot on your plate, but we've been, you know, I think we've been able to impact some children's lives directly pretty well. So I'm hopeful we can continue to do so.
And I think the Sullivan Farm up the road from north offers some land for some of our, our families that want to plant their own garden. I see them often working in the, in the field.
Yeah, that was the program that I developed with them.
Oh, okay.
I oversee, yeah, that program there. So we're also developing a community farm that ties into this garden. So we currently manage approximately four acres. We have a young farming incubator. We also have space for the refugee community farmers. So this is, I guess, one piece of a larger puzzle.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Good luck. Tonight. Yes, and good luck.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I think I'm going to take off now. I gotta go cook dinner.
Oh, you want to come to my house and cook dinner, too?
Maybe, maybe if we get some vegetables from the garden.
There you go. You love veggies.
Thank you very much, everyone. And I'll be in touch when we get closer with Gate City Fence.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, could we also allow Mr. Zorbe to leave if he wants?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, I got it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You, too.
Okay, next on our agenda is Park and Rec Rental of the Fields Gymnasium. Mr. Smith and Mr. Donovan, take it away.
Sean, did he disappear? Well, I guess.
Did he go to dinner?
I meant, let's see. Well, I guess I can speak to it. He was going to, but as you're probably well aware, each summer, we work with the Park and Rec Department to provide camps, sports camps for Nashua youth. Typically, they use high school gymnasiums, occasionally a middle school gymnasium, and some of our fields, and occasionally a few classrooms in case they have some rain, rainy days. As you're aware, we voted not to allow any rentals of our facilities for this, this school year. So the Park and Rec Director or Manager, Kelly D. Simone, reached out and said, so will we be able to use the summer camps? So we did, Sean Smith, myself, and Lisa Gingras, our Athletic Director, talked about it. I think we're all fine with this happening, but we wanted to sort of bring it forward to make sure the board is A, aware, and B, in support of, of doing this, that we will, we will have students on site at, at our facilities. Most of the time, they're outside, but there is some, some inside. And we did attach to the, the packet their safety guidelines. So they've obviously spent some time putting a plan together and how to deal with this, with the potential COVID issues. So that's pretty much what we would like to bring forward. And if there's any questions or, but we would, what we would like is for the committee and the full board eventually to approve that the, the facilities could be used for the Park Rec students this summer.
Does anybody have any questions, comments regarding this? Ms. Oden?
Yeah, I just want to say I fully support this. I think our facilities haven't been used to their optimum use this year. And I think it's great that somehow these kids can get together. I know all of our athletes have spoken positively about getting together and seeing other people. So I, I think it's a, this is a no-brainer for me. I, I think it's exactly what many of our kids need. So thank you. I'll support it.
But, Ms. Brown?
I'm right there with you. I absolutely support this program in allowing them use of our buildings and our spaces, indoor and outdoor. And if I can just advocate for the community even to sign up for these kind of programs, the Parks and Rec summer camps, my kids have done, I don't know, probably five different camps, and they've all been excellent, very affordable, especially compared to other area private camps. So I fully support it as well.
Okay. Well, I'm going to support this because I think these, our students, our kids need to have some type of normalcy again. And it's summertime, and they should be out enjoying themselves. It's been a rough year, not being able to see their friends and being in school. So I'm going to support this. Okay, is there any other questions, discussion on this? If not, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Park and Rec Rental of gym, of fields and gymnasiums.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And motion carries. Okay, the next thing we have on the agenda, moving right along here, is crossing guards. And who's going to be speaking on this?
I'll speak to it, I guess. So each year, probably about six, seven years ago, one of the board members said they had heard a lot of issues about crossing guards. So at least once a year, occasionally twice a year, we'll review. So our Director of Safety, Chris Lassard, is in charge of the crossing guards. So he put together this, this memo describing the current situation. As you can see, there are seven and a half posts without what we call a permanent assignment. And that is higher than I think we typically see. But I bet if I went back the last four or five years, there would always be at least two or three posts that we have a hard time filling. The issue with these, these positions is they're not very long. A lot of them are only a half hour or 45 minutes. So even though the rate of pay per hour is reasonable, you don't work a lot of hours. And it doesn't seem to have a lot of people that are willing to, especially if they have to drive to the post, most of the time, we tend to find someone that lives near the post, and they're willing to walk outside their house and take care of it. So due to the fact that we typically have openings, we use, we have one of our security guards who's sort of an outside security guard. We'll send that person. We try to get crossing guard subs. Those, we have a few, but not too too many. And then custodians can take a training course and also go ahead and do that work. So that's the, that's what we've been using to try to get more staff. If you notice on the back of the sheet, Chris Lassard came up with an idea this year to put on some of the signs around the schools where the crossing guard posts are, are open. So he, he went out and he's preparing these signs. So it lets everyone know the post is not staffed. Please contact the Nashua School District to sign up and help out. So we're hoping it will, I think it will be a challenge the next month or so. We're hoping that as more people get vaccinated, we'll have more candidates that would take this on. We've seen many of the jobs that are, are part-time jobs, usually manned by older people. Until they're getting their shots and their vaccines, they're not comfortable doing the work. And personally, I don't blame them. So this is sort of a status to just sort of let you know. And, and the other thing is what Chris Lassard will do, some of these posts are probably potentially more dangerous than others. So he'll sort of fill those based on what he thinks is more dangerous. Now, obviously, every post where we have a crossing guard is somewhat dangerous, to the point, that's why we have the crossing guard there. But obviously, a post maybe crossing Kinsley Street or West Hollis Street would be a little bit more difficult than one closer to a school. So that's sort of an update on where we are. Sean, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Mr. Donovan, what's the rate of pay for the crossing guard?
I believe it's, it's between $16 and $17 an hour.
Okay. I remember when I was on the board, back when, they had the same problem, because it's just that little bit of time during the day that people have to give up if they're doing anything to stop and become a crossing guard. So the custodians volunteer to do that, to go out?
Well, they, they get paid.
Okay. Because it said here, who volunteer, crossing guard subs, a security guard and custodian who volunteer will be assigned to help fulfill. So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, no, they, they volunteer to learn how to do it. They have to take a quick training course. So that's, they volunteer to do that, and then they become basically one of the subs.
Okay, so when we say they become basically one of the subs, do they get additional pay on this?
They get paid an hourly rate, yes. I think they get paid their rate. Is that right, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so they get paid their rate, and that's over?
That's higher than the crossing guard rate, yes. By about $3, I think.
Um, I'm just taking notes here.
There aren't many of them that take advantage of that either. It's tough to get them out as well.
Okay, so, so if they were to do? Okay. So, so if they were to do, let's say, became a crossing guard, they would get their rate of pay on top of getting paid for being inside, right? So, if they went two hours out to be a crossing guard, they'd get two hours extra for being a crossing guard?
They, they typically work the shift, they don't typically leave where they're working. So, if their shift is until 2:00, and there was a crossing guard post from 1:00 to 2:00, they wouldn't leave their job to do the crossing guard. They would be available from 2:00 on.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Okay. Is any more questions? Ms. Oden?
No. I agree with Mr. Donovan. Every position as a crossing guard is important for safety for our kids. But I do look at the Fairgrounds Elementary/Middle School, Kinsley Street at St. Joe's, and Fairgrounds Elementary/Middle School, West Hollis at 12th Street, because I know how fast the traffic travels on both those roads. Seeing where it's for both elementary and middle school, is that period of work time any longer than some of the other ones?
If they work, Sean, do you, I think I, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I believe, I didn't even look at the start times for the schools before the meeting, but Fairgrounds Middle School starts earlier than Fairgrounds Elementary, so it would be a longer post. At least, that's what I believe, without really looking at the numbers.
So, if somebody took that position, they would be able to earn a little bit more money than taking one that just has one elementary or one middle school?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Thank you. So, I think you made a good point that this is a job that tends to be for, lean towards retired people, or maybe parents that are, still have young kids at home or something. And also people who live in the vicinity. Have we considered maybe doing a one-time direct mailing to the community surrounding the, the schools to say that we've got these positions open?
We have not done that. I mean, we've tried to go through the schools and through the PTOs, but we have not gone straight to the community.
Is something that might be worth some consideration if it was, you know, a few, to spend a few hundred dollars for the safety, might be worth it, you know, kind of like they do for seasonal help at, through the post office and that kind of thing?
Okay.
As you just said that, Jessica, it made me think, maybe we should put a posting down at the Nashua Senior Center, if it's for a lot of retired people, so that they know that they could pick up a few extra dollars a, a week, doing something like that, just, just to reach out to try to find some people to fill these important positions.
That's a good idea, too.
Any other questions? Okay, so. So, we're going to take a mo, make a motion. Sorry about that. My daughter had an emergency. So, I'm kind of like, so, I'm going to make a motion to accept the memo from Chris Lassard, regarding the crossing guards. This is just basically just to give us a heads-up, right?
Yes.
This, so there's nothing really that much that we have to vote on, right?
No, you don't need an official vote. It's just, this was a heads-up to let you know, because a lot of times, people will reach out to Board members regarding things like that.
Okay. So, we're just, this is just informational?
Yes.
So, we don't need to vote on this? Okay, perfect. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Three-School HVAC Project. Mr. Smith, I've got a question to begin with. These were all bids? These had, these were put out to bid?
No, they weren't. I will talk to that.
Okay, please. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I know. That's a area of sensitivity for you, and it actually is for me as well. So, I think we're, we're kind of approaching it from the same direction. So, some of you may recall that we renovated Charlotte Avenue Fairgrounds and Lead Street back in the early part of this past decade, so 2012 and 13, those projects were completed. The primary purpose of that project, those projects were to address mechanical and electrical issues. We replaced boilers, we put in efficiency boilers, we changed from unit ventilators to a centralized air handling system, replaced lighting with LED, that sort of thing. And one of the key components of the ventilation system we installed was something called displacement air. So, to try to put it in layman's terms, if you go into one of those classrooms in those schools, you will see a, the, the duck work that comes down in the corners of the classroom, and to kind of a grill work in, in the corners. And what that does is introduce fresh air at the lowest levels, and then swoops it up with this, I mean, heat naturally rises. And in doing so, it grabs all the carbon dioxide that the people in the classroom breathe out, and any smells, odors, whatnot, and it's exhausted out high in each individual space. So, that's called displacement air. I've been here, I'm in my 24th year, and the schools, we have that by a pretty wide margin. I get the fewest amount of complaints from them on air quality. So, it's definitely a system that works. Other schools, we've got that installed. It was first done at Fairgrounds Middle School in the mid-'90s, at Amherst Street, in the late '90s, around 2000. And then these three schools, we've since installed it at Broad Street and Sunset Heights. And we plan to do so at Penachuck and the New Middle School as we get into those projects. So, the, we, unfortunately, when we did those projects, 2012 and 2013, we just ran out of money, the construction funds. So, the, the upshot of that was the rear classroom way. So, if you go down the center corridor of each of those schools, then go past the, the crossroads, where you go left or right to the gym or library, to the very end, then you get this classroom that's perpendicular to the, that hallway. And so, that, that classroom has old ventilation that was stalled, 1990-ish, probably before that. It's all unit ventilators. And the, the big part, too, about the, the remainder of the schools and the systems they receive was they got dehumidification, which is a step above or below, depending on your perspective, for air conditioning. It sucks all the moisture out of the air, and it gets more comfortable in those saddle seasons when it gets hot outside. So, I've always felt there was kind of a inequity for the staff and students that had to, to work in those wings, those rear wings in each of those three schools. So, the, the company that designed all that, it's called, actually, was the H.L. Turner Group at one point. They did Amherst Street and Fairgrounds Middle School. There's a shoot-off of that that was primarily engineers that, that worked specifically on displacement air. That's Turner Building Science. They were the architect and engineers for the project. So, I stayed in touch with them all through the years, hoping at some point, we would have the money to actually finish the job. And this is really about finishing the job. And my feeling, although we did not bid it out, admittedly, I did not, could other architectural firms do the work? Yes, they could. I've been using Harriman at Broad Street and Sunset Heights, for example, and they installed displacement air systems. The, the leg up that Turner Building Science has on that is, they are really the forerunner of displacement air in this country, or at least the northeastern part of this country, was a system that was first designed and installed in Scandinavia, and they brought it over. So, they're really the experts in it. They already have the blueprints for the building. They've already looked at doing the design back when the project was being considered. But again, because the budget we stopped, we couldn't do that work. So, could we bid it out? Yes, we could. I don't think we'll get a better firm to do it. I don't think we'll find a firm that does it with as much knowledge of the school without a lot of coming up to speed. Coming up to speed, to me, means money and time. And, you know, I could be totally wrong, but I, I don't, I don't think so. It's, it's a company I'm certainly familiar with. So, we did actually request the funds to do the actual work in next year's deferred maintenance. And we all know how deferred maintenance goes in this, the city. Unfortunately, we don't tend to get nearly enough for the school system. But in talking with Mr. Donovan, we potentially do have some funds in the CARES Act, which we could use for this. You could probably talk more to that. I expect the total cost for the installation of these systems in those three schools to be about half a million dollars. And depending on what flavor of CARES Act we're talking about, again, Mr. Donovan can talk to this, part of them expire this coming summer. I want to say September, and I'm not positive about that. We do potentially have another round of CARES Act coming, but that, we don't know what the criteria is for that yet, except that that would run out in two summers from now. So, I'm hopeful that we can find money to actually do the work. We do however have money and deferred maintenance budget already from this year, and some money left over from past years. And so, I'm recommending that we award a contract to Turner Building Science to do the design work and then to monitor the construction for us. That, if you have the memo, it's really the last paragraph I put there, it's in the amount of $61,800 for the three schools, and I listed the deferred maintenance account. And that's my presentation.
You're on mute. Ms. Johnson, you're on mute.
Thank you. So, the $61,800 is to actually do the design work, and a half a million is to do the act, to do the work. Is that it?
Correct, correct.
Okay. I'm not going to support this, because I've asked for the bids. This is over $10,000, and we should be seeing bids. And we're not. And I guess this is, you know, this goes on. I mentioned this the last time.
Did you not, I'm sorry, did you not receive this in your package?
Which one was that?
This, this was the proposal from Turner Building Science. It's basically their bid.
Yeah, but there's only one bid.
No, no, what you have, if we're looking at the same thing, this is my memo. And then, but there was actually a proposal from Turner Building Science that should have been attached to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dan, do you know if that was in there?
Yes, it's in there.
It's in here. It's in here. But, you know, it's just, this is just one bid. We're supposed to, it's over $10,000. We should be having more than one bid, because we didn't put it out there. That's, that's the whole thing. We didn't put it out to bid.
Well, I think I explained myself on why we, I felt that this was the right way to go.
Okay. But I would like to see other companies read them, and then have you sit down and say, "Well, you know, after we read all the proposals, this is the right way to go. It's only $10,000." So, we're looking at this. We didn't finish the project the first time, and we're talking about, you know, maintenance money and all this. We never had the funds. Maybe we should ask the mayor for the money from the Performing Arts Center. I think these, these schools, the renovations are more important than the Performing Arts Center, and nobody's going to come, you know, especially if you have social distancing and masks, you know, who's going to go to Performing Arts Center? I'm going to support it, because there should have been three bids on this. It's over $10,000. Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion? Ms. Brown?
So, I do agree with you, Ms. Johnson, that we should be bidding, getting multiple quotes. However, I think under the circumstances, since we have, this company has actually worked for us before and already has the essential basic design plan, and they're one of the leading companies in this area, I do agree with Mr. Smith's assessment that they, it's worth awarding them the design contract at this time. But really, what my vote's going to depend on is what Mr. Donovan says about how, what we're going to be able to fund this out of long-term come the project. So, I know there's a lot of things that we've been kind of earmarking COVID money for, or CARE, I'm sorry, CARES Act money. And I will say, air quality and purification does fall under that in an honest way, in my opinion. There's a lot of other things that could be a little bit more dubious. Where do you think we're going to be in, I mean, in a position to actually fund this project in a legitimate fashion when it needs to be done, when we get the design finished?
I actually spent time on the existing CARES Act, which is the $3 million that we received last, late last spring. Now then, keep in mind, so we were given $3 million, then they gave us that SPSRF, which was another $2 million, and we had to spend that all between November and December. And we gave you an update on that at the end of last year or in January. So, we spent that. Now, we've got this $3 million, which, based on the existing structure of the grant, we need to spend that by the end of September of this year. So, between what we've already spent doing this project and finishing up our technology needs, that should spend that, probably that $3 million. This $60,000 could be funded by the CARES, CARES Act. So, and then, as Mr. Smith had mentioned, slipped out in the last meeting, there's another big chunk of money coming our way. We don't have the exact amount yet. We don't have what we can use it for yet, but it's part of CARES Act. It's going to be a significant sum of money. I don't want to share it with people, because I don't know what we can use it for. But keep in mind, it's grant. So, as you said earlier, Mrs. Brown, you know, there's certain things that fit in easy, certain things that don't. Ventilation for schools fit in easy. Chromebooks fit in easy. Remote learning things fit in easy. So, that's my plan to try to use that 3.2 million that we have to use by the end of September to get this work done. So, that's, that's what my plan is. Like I said, I worked on that today. I'm going to meet with the grant person on Thursday and try to get the grant reallocated. Once, once we do, we'll reallocate it, send it up to the state, and then we'll get approval back on whether we can spend the way we plan.
Thank you. And my other follow-up question to that is, the second round of monies, does it come directly to our school district through grants, or does it have to go through the Board of Aldermen and then be dispersed from the mayor?
No, it'll be like this one. It'll be through a grant directly to us.
Good to hear. Thank you. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I agree with much of what Ms. Brown said, in the fact that this company certainly is one of the leaders in this, and they've worked in our system, and they have a lot of the, the plans. I, I went to Fairgrounds, I think it was two summers ago or three summers ago, because they have summer school there. And I didn't realize only part of the building had been done. And I went from one wing into another wing, and it was probably 20 degrees warmer in the, in the wing that did not have it. I went to the office to say, "Is the, the air conditioning or the, the system broken?" And they said, "No, it's not done in there." And they have summer school. So, I, I think it's important to get this, this done. And I believe, I'm not sure, does Lead Street have summer school? I think Charlotte Ave does. But do the other two schools also have summer school?
We, we moved the summer schools around, but typically Fairgrounds Elementary and Lead have it. Charlotte sometimes.
Okay. I, I know. Okay, I, I know uh sometimes Amherst Street will have it too.
Yes.
Uh so I, I think it's a. If, if we want to optimize learning, it's really hard for these kids when it's ninety outside or ninety-five and it's. Eighty or eighty-five in the classroom, uh they get a little ragged. Uh so I, I would like to see it done and the sooner we get it done, the better. So um. I understand the ten thousand dollar bid, Ms. Johnson. I agree with you. But under these circumstances, because it's somebody we worked with, they've worked on the buildings, they understand it, they have the blueprints. I think this is probably the best way to go. Thank you.
Well, it might be the best way to go, but you could have bids and come in with it to show us. Because we're supposed to do this. So do we just look the other way when we're supposed to do things? And do it right? Or do we just skip a couple of steps? You know, so I, I, I believe that we were supposed to have the three bids. And we should, as a board, should have been able to sit there and look at the bids, ask a question about the bids. And if we figure with uh Mr. Smith that this was the best one, then that's what you go with. But we don't know. I mean, I remember, Ms. Odin, you remember, all the schools used all the same contractors all the time because they was the best whatever. And they were used the same people over and over. They, well, they had the blueprints. They worked on the other schools. And we skipped the steps, but these steps are here for a reason. So I'm not going to support this. So, okay, so I'm going to make a motion for the three schools for the HVAC. With um. Turner Building Science and Design LLC. Do I have a second?
Okay. What was the motion again, Ms. Johnson?
To accept the three schools HVAC project. With. Turner Building Science and Design LLC.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Probably want to add in the amount of sixty one thousand eight hundred.
I'm sorry, sixty one thousand eight, not to exceed sixty one thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, Mrs. John.
For deferred maintenance?
Yep, account number ninety-one.
Yeah, actually, we're, if we can switch that, we'll do that to CARES Act, the CARES Grant.
Okay, so we'll just leave that to be determined.
Yeah, you can just use CARES Act and there'll be a number associated with it, but.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes no. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin? Uh oh. We lost Ms. Odin.
She did say she was.
I'm sorry, yes, but I am having problems. Somebody told me maybe shut the video off. I got the message that my network's unstable again, so. I'll shut my video off.
Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the committee member questions.
Okay, so last time, um I believe it was Mrs. Johnson asked about the overtime, what we've been spending overtime on this year, which I think was a good question because. For a lot of the year, uh people haven't been in school. So basically each month when I review the financials, I, this is one of the accounts I look at carefully. Um and basically I break it up into two pieces. I break it up into the school administration costs and what I call plant operation costs. So plant operations would be all custodial work and the trades work done by the trades groups. Um and the other overtime would I call school administration um overtime. So basically uh through February of this year, our overtime spend has been eighty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. Uh last year, that number was significantly higher, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand five ninety-three, so. We've spent one eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four thousand less, which you would, you would expect for a couple of reasons. Um so, but when I broke out the school administration, I said, okay, what have been the main drivers? Um first of all, fiscal services, that's basically the payroll and the accounts payable. Um at the beginning of the year, we were down a person in the accounts payable. Um those people have worked throughout the whole pandemic. Um we were down one person, so we had to. Uh the other person work, work some extra hours um. To keep us, keep us going. Human resources, same thing. They've been understaffed by one or two people. I think they finally have uh fully staffed up in the last few weeks. Um so that number is, is five thousand. I don't think, I, I think for the rest of the year, that number should be a lot less. Um plant operations clerical, um that is, uh keep in mind, plant operations. Um has been in and working full-time all through this. Uh we used last summer, we did a lot of our, um since the schools were closed, we did a lot of our purchases. They were delivered to plant ops and then checked in there and then moved off to the other schools. Um the next two items are basically guidance. Now, that's the sixteen thousand and the three, that's the biggest chunk of this. That's really not the same, it's not overtime, it's not uh. Hourly people working extra hours. What it really is, is um the guidance staff goes in and works with administration at the middle and high schools. To make sure the students have all the right uh courses they want to take, so they work on their schedules. They're paid their regular per diem, so it's a much higher rate. Well, it's, it's, it's the, the same rate they get if they were working during the year. Uh but if it's someone that makes, you know, sixty thousand a year, it's, it's, you know, four hundred dollars a day or so. So we get that cost every year. It's typically done in, in August and early September. Um and then just all the schools combined is about four thousand dollars. Most, most of that is simply someone working an extra hour, a half hour here and there. It's not. Large sums of money, but you figure we've got, you know, eighteen different schools and they work a little bit of overtime to get things done. So that's, that's that piece of it. The other piece is what we call the plant operations piece. And the main drivers for that this year is um the construction at Fairgrounds Middle. Uh they've been a couple of staff members that have been out there. And to keep up with the construction, we've needed people to get over there and, and, and keep things. Keep things clean as they've uh worked with the construction people. Um. The vaccines that are taking place at the high school, uh we're all very grateful for that, but keep in mind, they're working eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week. Uh they need to get into the schools, so we do have to have somebody there all the time, so there is a cost to our district for that. Um my opinion is I'm fine with paying that because it's helping out the uh the greater community. Um the snow plowing cost this year is about eight thousand, could be a little bit less than that. That was an estimate based on when I looked at when the storm, the month the storms took place. Um. And then the biggest chunk of the overtime in, in the trades group this year is the vestibules. If you recall, we had some grants from the state. We had to finish them by twelve thirty-one. We also tried to finish them all by the time school started. The initial plan was to have students in the buildings in October. So we worked um overtime during the summer in September to get them ready. That plan ended up changing, but um. So that's, that's uh the largest part of the plant operations overtime, so. That's a quick summary of, of the overtime that we've incurred this year.
Any questions? Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Um first question is, uh do we have another line item somewhere for plowing costs? Is that, or is it always just wrapped into overtime um budget?
That would just be an overtime. We don't have a specific line for that.
And secondly, um the number of that high school guidance is really high, and you said it usually happens in August and September. So um and correct me if I'm wrong here, so that's uh sixteen seventy-five. About, so between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year if you do it twice a year. I'm wondering if they're, actually I had this, I'd like you to think about this. Um. Consider maybe hiring another guidance person. You'd eliminate employee burnout. You'd better service the students with an extra body in there and um then we could even. Get this overtime budget. Down a little bit, unless it's sixteen, unless I could mistake it in sixteen thousand total, in which case that would be tough to hire anybody for sixteen thousand dollars a year qualified.
Yes, it's, it's just for the first semester, so it's once a year. The second semester, they deal with it because they're in the building already, so it's part of their regular schedule. Uh this is an item that's in the teacher contract. Um so basically, the way it reads in the contract is if their services are required, the principal can reach out to those people and ask them to come in. And like I said, it's typically the sort of the, the week, the week before school starts.
Right.
This year, it might have been slightly different.
And that makes sense. I mean, and right now, I mean, I know that the, they're starting to transition, the eighth graders get their schedules prepped for. The fall and all that kind of stuff. But are we in a situation where um? You know, the, the last, this third week of August, are these people so overwhelmed that our student services are not getting performed because they're um. To the quality they should be because they're do, everybody's working eighty hours?
No, these, these are people on the teacher's schedule, so they don't work in the summer. This is when they come in and work an extra week in the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Odin, do you have any questions?
No, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
Okay, I've got a question on one of, a couple of things, covering the South High School for vaccines. Who um who said that we were going to use the school? Is this the city itself?
Sean, do you want to? Talk about how that started?
Sure, I, I received a phone call from the state, actually, from their environmental health department. I don't remember the name. And who had talked to Bobby Bagley of our public health. And suggested that uh they look at the, at that point, the North High School, and I suggested the South be better situated. So that's kind of where the request came from. And to amplify a little bit more about the overtime associated with it. Um we were, we're, we cover the school from six thirty or six o'clock Monday morning until. Uh six thirty Saturday morning, so it's really Saturday and Sunday that we incur the overtime. Uh from eight to eight each of those two days.
So. So we pay for the overtime, but the state said for us to do this, basically, ask us. I think Sununu should pay for this. Why should we pay for this? He should be paying for this. We need to send him a bill. Because first of all, if we bring the students back to school full-time, we've got a line out there. We have three offices there, which nobody can patrol, patrol the streets here. With people running red lights on West Hollis Street, but we've got three cruises up there. And the lines get pretty long at times. And we're doing all this security at the schools. You know, I have concerns about that. Um I've got concerns about the vaccines over there, uh especially if our students go back into school. And they go back into full-time. With the vaccines out there. Um and we're using up, we're using the high school, the state should be reimbursing us for that five thousand dollars, should be coming out of the city's coffe. Or the, or the schools. So I have problems with that with the states. Um. Snow plowing this winter. Um. We had to open up the schools and everything for a certain point. Um but how many of our students were in the schools? That we had overtime of eight thousand dollars for snow plowing? That we had a, we opened up the schools that much?
I, I guess I, I could address that. Um so basically, almost all of our schools have special education programs. They run pretty much the entire week, so we had to, for that reason, we had to take care of all the schools.
Okay.
If I could respond to your vaccine question too. Um they keep the vaccines in, in locked refrigeration units that they brought. Uh and it put in our locker rooms, the athletic locker rooms, which are not being used by the athletes uh. Winter or spring, so it's, it's pretty secure that way.
I'm just worried about the long. Um amount of cars that are there and if we bring our students back. And we have people going in and out of the high school. Again, we bring up all these perimeters.
Cars are lined up to the police department when I left work tonight.
Yeah, okay, so aligned to the police department and we're having students, we want to try to get our students back into school. That's not going to work. With our students driving to school. I mean, we have to plan now. Hopefully, we get our students back into school full-time. What are we going to do if we have lines of cars like that? It doesn't work. So, I mean, maybe the governor and Bobby Bagley, the environmental health department needs to bring it downtown, put it by City Hall. I don't know, but I mean, you, it doesn't, it's not a good mix to get kids back into school. And that's, my goal is to get students back in school. That's what my priority is, not about the vaccines. People want the vaccines, that's fine. But our priority on this board is to make sure our students are back in school and they're safe and they can get to school. Because it's been way too long that they haven't been in school. And the weather's getting nice, so windows can open and ventilation can go and these students should be back into school. So, thank you.
Can I just say, I went last Thursday at ten o'clock in the morning. And there were only a handful of cars. There was no line. I thought I'd have, I went early because I thought I'd have to wait. And I ended up leaving fifteen minutes before my appointment because I was. Uh I had everything done by then, so um I don't know, maybe Sean, there was a big crowd there because it was after work.
Yes, it typically backs up quite a bit at, at when work ends, you know, three o'clock on.
Mm-hmm, and I went during the school day and I don't know what it's usually like, but I talked to somebody else who went. A couple of days before me and they said it wasn't real crowded, so I don't. I don't know, I, there was a policeman there, but uh there were very few cars there, so. Maybe it's not a problem during the day.
It usually isn't. It, it might back up to uh where that Performance Rehab building is. Um kind of kitty corner across the main entrance of the high school. That's, that's typically the worst I've seen it till today.
And that, but we still have students coming in and out. And. I think um if we're going to use our high school, then the state should pay for our high school. And it shouldn't come out of school district's um pocket because we have things of our own that we have to do. Okay, moving on. Okay, so we don't need to have any motions on that. Um so now we're going to talk about the February fiscal year twenty-one financial report. Mr. Donovan, it's all yours.
Okay, Sean, thank you. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, um through the month of February, not a whole lot uh of highlights here. Um payroll, two bi-weeklies, four weekly pays equals on the full-time wages, six point five million, sort of the same as the amount you'll see in um January and November, so. We're, we're moving along fine there. Uh same with wages, part-time. The uh overtime account, um so this, when I took a look at this month of that fourteen thousand, six thousand of it was snow, we just talked about that. Um three thousand was the vaccine and, and then the smaller amounts. Um. Other accounts there, the, the stipends, you'll notice that's twenty-five thousand this month. Typically, it's lower than that. That has the middle school coaches and. What you usually see, which is the head teachers, which is about six or seven thousand a month. And uh the vacation separation, a couple of uh custodians left and were paid off their vacation. That's what that three thousand dollars is. So um other than that, nothing really to, it was pretty, pretty standard month for the month of February. Uh fringe benefits, nothing outstanding there. Um professional technical services. Uh you'll notice the instruction services. Uh, you'll notice the instruction services, um, is much lower at seven thousand compared to the other months, the other months. Uh, the invoice that we, we have with the Adult Learning Center for the Clearway Program didn't get entered until March. So that's why it's, it's lower. You'll see a, uh, so you'll see March to be significantly higher. You'll see the makeup there for the February amount. Um, other than that, not much more on that page. Um, switch over to page two, property services. Um, as I mentioned, if you look at the electricity account, you'll see that December and January were low. And then you'll see that February is much higher. So that was sort of the catch-up where the invoices sort of slipped, uh, from one month to another. Um, but I think we're pretty much caught up now. Um, interesting year to date. Uh, we have a spend of electricity of eight hundred and fifteen thousand last year. At the same time, it was one point three million. So I, part of what you're seeing there is the savings that we, we got by paying off those Smart Start programs. So that's a good thing, and, and that should give me some cushion and, and a couple of other accounts that are going to overrun this year. That's my hope. Um, heating gas, basically, we're at four hundred and four thousand year-to-date. Obviously, we're in the, the busy season for that. You'll see significant numbers in March and April, May and June will drop off significantly. But year-to-date, it's at four oh four. Year-to-date last year, we're at four thirty-eight, so pretty much in the same area. And sort of did the same analysis for water. Uh, it's running, for water, it's running a little less. It's, it's seventy-nine thousand year-to-date. Last year, it was a hundred and one. So all in all, the utilities are doing well versus budget at this point in time. And we're, we're, you know, eight out of the twelve months complete. So there should be no issues with those accounts. Um, you'll notice a couple down, building and grounds maintenance, there's a minus thirty-one thousand. If you remember last month, there was an error. One of the, uh, electricity bills was charged to that account instead of to the electricity account. So that's been corrected. Thus, the part of the reason the higher number in electricity in February and a negative number in that account this month. Um, other than that, not too much more to say in, in those. Um, so the other services, uh, telephone voice you see is much higher than you'll ever see. Um, and typically, what, what happened there was we, some of our IT, uh, lines, we had to go out and, and get the E-rate redone. So we were holding on to invoices, a total of, um, about forty thousand dollars of, uh, bills. So we've, working with Greg Rodriguez in IT. We are paying those, and then over the next month or two, we'll be getting a credit back on those. Um, so that, that does look very high, but that will, that will be corrected as we move forward with, with the E-rate number. And we have the approval now. It's just a matter of time. So we'll probably see it in March. At the latest, in April, you'll see a, a credit to reduce that number. Um, other than that, a lot of these, uh, smaller accounts, not a lot of mileage and travel. You'll notice, um, on the far right, when you look at accounts like travel, mileage, conference and seminars, they're, you know, the spend year-to-date is like four point nine six, or four point five, seven, nineteen point two. Those are costs that were, people had put in their budget, and they're just not, they're not spending on those type of items as you would expect. Um, at the bottom of the page, you'll see regular transportation services. Um, and as you notice, you look at December, it was a very low number, much higher in January, and then sort of back to normal in February. So, uh, you'll see that also on page three with the sped transportation services. So we're sort of up to date on the, on the billing and the invoicing for the transportation. Um, tuition out of district had a big number this month, but if you take a look at January, you'll notice a small number. Uh, we, we had to cancel our meeting to talk about that. Um, I'm still hoping that the number is going to be lower. Though, we're kind of on the same path of where we were last year, uh, at this point in time. So I'll have a, a better update on that next month, because we'll, we'll have our meeting on the, on the detail in that account. Um, other than that, uh, supplies and materials, nothing really of note. Sort of everything is rolling on, as you would see on a typical month. Um, the indirect costs in, uh, group sixty-eight there, another twenty-five thousand. So we're almost hitting the budget line there, and we still have four months left. So we should have, that should be a good thing for the budget. A negative in a budget's a good thing. And then computer equipment, et cetera, not too much action. Most of that takes place early in the year. Um, the debt service. What that is, is, um, for the copier machines, the contract, the large payment was made in July. Um, and then in October, that was a down payment amount. And then in February, we made the final payment on one machine. We had purchased one machine on a three-year deal back three years ago. This is the final payment on that. So going forward, you're just going to have one capital lease, principal and interest payment in this account going forward. And then, excuse me, the major capital outlays and improvements. That's the hundred and seventy thousand that we used to close on the Franklin Street Building. If we recall, Franklin Street is a installment purchase. Uh, we paid six hundred thousand this first year. Uh, four hundred and thirty of it came from a grant. And this one seventy came, uh, from other accounts within our operating budget, so we made the payment. So that, that will wrap that up for this year, and we budgeted that in for next year. Uh, a total amount of two hundred and fifty thousand is the payment due next year. So other than that, uh, it kind of gets us to the bottom. So as you can see, we're basically fifty-nine percent through the budget. So all in all, it looks okay. I am be, going to begin my, um, forecast early this year, because there are some accounts that are way under budget, and there's some accounts that are way over a budget, budget, all based on the pandemic. Um, so I'll get my hands around that better, and hopefully, um, come April, I'll have my first forecast. Typically, I don't have it till May, but I should have something, so, uh, that is the report. Any questions?
I have a question on transportation. So we had forty buses, we have eighty, eighty-eight buses?
Correct.
We have?
Yes.
Okay, so forty buses was, were being used. And forty-eight buses weren't.
Well, right now, I think we're using seventy-something buses.
Now using seventy.
I think it's seventy-three, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, seventy plus is close enough. So what's going to happen now with the gas prices going up significantly? That, um, you could choke over it already. We went from low to high.
It's not our issue, that's first student's issue.
So what do we have, I don't remember, uh, written in the contract?
Written in the contract is any fuel costs, whether they go up or down, are the responsibility of first student.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Brown, Ms. Oden? Nothing? Okay, with that said, I'm going to make a motion to accept the February FY Twenty-One Financial Report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Oden. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and the last thing on the agenda. Look at this. It's six twenty-two. We should be done by seven o'clock. That's the goal. Um, Mr. Donovan, the transfer report?
Yes, I'll just run through the transfers quickly. There's not too many of them. Uh, first one is a transfer from Mount Pleasant. They're moving, um, some of their supply costs. Now, yeah, they're, they're, they're really moving from the specific supplies charged to sort of art, music and ESL, et cetera, and putting it into their school-wide supply account. So that's really just changing from within programs. Um, it's not really moving money around between accounts, more between programs. Um, Ledge Street School, uh, is moving from fifty-one, six fifty, which is, they're moving it to supplies from additional hours. So I'll, I'll take a better look at that one. That's, I'm not sure that's the right number. I'm going to verify that in the morning. But it's a small amount, so if, if not, we'll correct it next month. Um, Elm Street Middle School, um, what you see here is they were moving money around to buy some Chromebooks. Um, they're buying a, a bunch of Chromebooks and, and a couple of carts. Basically, I, I'm probably going to transfer some of this to the CARES Act. So to have, since it's something that can be covered by CARES, which will then open up, um, some more money, the, in the operating budget for the end of the year. So that's the plan. This entry was put in before that was discussed, so.
One question I have, how would they buy Chromebooks if you can't get the Chromebooks?
Well, they're ordering Chromebooks.
Well, you know, I got an email from somebody that said that they ordered Chromebooks, a different school district around the same time we did, and they got theirs, and we didn't get ours. I mean, I guess it's like my microwave. I've been waiting since December and I can't get it. Um, but, so we're ordering the Chromebooks, but we don't, do they have a date of when it's going to come in?
I don't know if they have a date yet, but, um, they did speak with IT and talked about it. One of the issues we have with our large orders, it's so large. So if you're a, if you're a Chromebook supplier, and you have two thousand Chromebooks, and somebody orders three thousand, you can't fill that order. But if someone orders a hundred, you can fill that order. So I think you're starting to see some of that. Think about it, how many school districts in, um, New Hampshire would have a need for thirty-five hundred Chromebooks at one point in time? Not very many. So I think that's kind of what we're running into. But we, we, I spoke with Greg at IT today, and we are getting an update in the next few days, so.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mount Pleasant is just moving around from, uh, paper and furniture into Ed Supplies. Rather, not too important there. Okay, the hundred and seventy thousand, this is, um, as I talked about before. We took it from the excess in transportation, because we're not paying for all, a hundred percent for all the buses. So there's a savings of at least a hundred and seventy thousand, uh, through the first six months. And so we use that to pay the Franklin Street costs this year. That's where that one seventy came. Okay, and the second one is the same entry, just, there was, it was a new account put in place. So when we made the first entry, so we, we could cut the check, the new account wasn't set up. So the second one is taking it from where we put it. You'll see the bottom number on the first entry is the same as the top number on the second entry. So effectively, had we had the number set up in the beginning, we would have done just one entry. But that's what that is. Uh, Nashville High School North is purchasing three iPads for the ESL, moving it from their supplies to a computer equipment. And Nashville High School North, on the last entry, is purchasing a few Chromebooks. Well, actually, uh, there's thirty-one thousand of Chromebooks there too. So I don't know a lot about this actual entry, um, about this purchase. I'll have to look into it, but I was aware of the Elm one. I wasn't aware of this one, um, until recently. Any questions on the transfers?
Ms. Brown?
Um, I would love a little update on where they are with, um, receiving those Chromebooks. I was going to ask the same question as Ms. Johnson about the availability. That'd be great to hear next month.
Okay, I will have that.
Ms. Oden?
I, I think I'm set. Thank you. Uh, no, I do have a question. Uh, when you started Franklin Street, when we were talking about it, and we voted to, uh, purchase it, we had asked if we could see it. Uh, at some point, can we get down there to see, uh, what, what we're doing and what type of facility we're going to have? I don't want to be in anybody's way. I know when workmen are there and trying to get things done, it's not the best time. But if there is a good time for us in the near future, I would love to see that. I think that probably was a wise purchase for us. Uh, I thought so when we made it, and I, I think so even more now.
Okay, I can certainly schedule something. You know, we have the keys now. You can, if you want, you could, there, the architect is doing the work now. So there's not a lot of construction happening just yet. If you wanted to walk through and see what it looks like now, and then maybe again later in the summer, after we've done all the fix-up, that might be kind of interesting if you'd like to do that.
Who would we have to contact to say we'd like to go down at a certain time on a certain day?
I will, uh, I'll talk to Sean.
Okay.
And he can sort of set it up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to accept the February FY Twenty-One Transfer Report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Oden. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
And motion carries. Um, is there, um, I wanted to say that, to get the committee's feeling, that I would like to open, um, the committee up for public comments. So people haven't seen anything on the agenda, and they'd like to talk to us about it. We could do it.
For our next, for our next meeting?
For our next meeting. I'm hoping that eventually, we will be back at the high school, where people can come in and talk to us. Um, but that's, I want to get, uh, committee's opinion about this.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable. The only thing I would ask is that it, that they can make comments. I don't see a question-answer period, much like the board. But I would hope there would be some type of a time limit.
Right. A lot of people don't come to committees. I don't think a lot of people will probably come to finance. They're usually more interested, I remember in the past, more on curriculum committee, um, maybe policy committee. Um, but it's just for the, you know, the public where they, there's no interaction really anymore that they, you know, even just to come in and sit and watch a committee, they, they really can't. So with that said, um, great. So, um, hopefully, next meeting, we can open it up to the public.
I think that's great. I, I agree with Ms. Oden. I think it would be fair to follow the board rules, fifteen minutes with three people, like, three minutes to speak or whatever for each individual.
Exactly. Just give them a chance, and if there's a question on their mind, they can bring it to our attention, and then we can discuss it. Okay? Okay, so any other, um, pieces of business that we need to discuss tonight? Anything else on the agenda that you want to talk about?
Nope. Not me.
Okay, so.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Um, Paula, Mrs. John, Ms. Brown, did you have anything?
Oh, I was in a second.
Oh, okay. Ms. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
And we are adjourned at six thirty-one.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Gabby.
Thank you, Paul. Have a good night, and we're done.
You too.
Seven o'clock.